Good evening for everybody who's here tonight and on TV. If we could go ahead and call the February 8th meeting to order, is there a motion to approve the, I'm sorry, roll call first?
Yes.
Roll call.
Mrs. Eichholz?
Here.
Mr. Marks?
Here.
Mrs. Singh?
Here.
Mr. Summarall?
Present.
Mr. Tullis?
Here.
Next item, if we do a motion to adopt the regular meeting agenda and the addendum?
Still move?
Second.
We, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. And at this point, we have no executive session tonight, we will stand in recess until We are going to move back into session from recess, I hope everybody had a good 30 minutes. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, everyone, and with that, if we could start with Mr. Konecki with the recognition, correspondence, and announcements.
Good evening, everyone, thank you. Couple of great celebrations tonight. First of all, congratulations to our mock trial team at IHHS for winning the 2022 Buckeye Bash Championship. Tournament was hosted by Ohio State University, weekend of January 8th and 9th. Our IHHS students earned individual awards. Tacey Hutton was one of two outstanding attorney award winners. Paige Falter and Anita Overton also won outstanding witness awards. And students Harrison Patti and Elsa Zhao were also a part of the championship team. Our mock trial continues to compete at such a high level, and so congratulations to all those students, and they'll be moving on to a state championship here pretty soon. Next up, Indian Hill School District wants to congratulate our IHES 5th grade class. Out of 123 teams, our 5th grade Braves placed in the rankings, numbers 1 through 11 in the stock market game this year. That's the first 11 teams, sponsored by a nonprofit All Spa Family Economic Center. We participate in this every year. It's awesome to see that we have our teams always compete so well against students, including college students, and one of our teams placed in first place overall. The elementary school first-place team earned more than $21,000 in 10 weeks playing the stock market and learning about investing. The team that won included Jenny Willingham, Devon Shee, Ratula, and Chloe Luther. The team will compete next in the portfolio challenge this spring at the University of Cincinnati, so congratulations. This is a program, board members, that has expanded from one class of Braves to the entire 5th grade now. It's a wonderful experiential learning opportunity for all of our students. The study of STEM is part of our curriculum DNA here at Indian Hill Primary School. Our educators are earning some headlines. IHPS was the only primary school in the region, and one of three in Hamilton County total, to receive an Ohio STEM Learning Network grant of $5,000 funded by Patel. The IHPS school faculty members who were awarded the grant included Monica Dawkins and Elizabeth Rebusch, who helped write the grant that will provide 3D printers and training for our students at IHPS. It's awesome to see that they took the time to put into writing that grant. Congratulations. We also would like to recognize and thank members and volunteers, who I think are here tonight, who helped with our annual Global Week at Indian Hill Schools, which is a series of amazing cultural learning events that we put on annually. Our Global Parent Network members, they are strong partners to the Indian Hill Schools, and we appreciate all of the volunteer support that we receive from this team. I invited the Global Parent Network members to come tonight, I think there are some here. If there are any officers or leaders from the global network who would like to come down to the podium and say a few words, we would love to have you come down, and while we're doing that, let's just give the entire Global Parent Network a round of applause. So much goes into planning an entire week of activities at every building, and impacting and influencing all of our students, and it's really exciting. Hi, Erin.
Hi.
Thank you for joining us.
Okay. First, I would like to thank all of our board members to give us this opportunity to be here and to recognize the very hard work our parents put in, pretty much every day. We meet monthly, but we think about it and talk about it almost daily, through emails, texts, whatever. So I am not going to take up too much time, but I can talk about our amazing parents for hours. All of our parents are doing it just to teach our students, all of our students, to accept different cultures that are different from ours. And we understand that once our students learn how to accept the different cultures that are different from us, that will change a lot in the future. And bringing diversity, that's our goal. And we want to replace the word weird with the word different. That's our goal. So I have just a few parents here tonight. Unfortunately, not all of our members could be here, but I know that they will be watching this later, if they're not watching it right now. So I just want to thank all of our parents that are doing amazing. I know life is busy, they are very busy, but they make time to volunteer to help our students, all of our students, and that means a lot. So I am so thankful and grateful to have an amazing parent, group of parents. So thank you all so much. We couldn't have done it without them, period. So I'm so thankful. And thank you again for giving us an opportunity.
Thank you, Erin.
Can I add something today?
Sure.
So since today, we have some of the Global Parent Network parents here, and some of them who are not here and who are going to watch, I just want to say a few things, and I want to share a few things about the group with other members. So first I want to say is, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you for all that you have been doing for our district. It is not easy. You guys have been doing it for a long time, and we really, really appreciate you guys. Thank you to all who are here today, and to all the others who have been helping, bringing the world to our students in Indian Hill every year. Thank you for sharing and educating our Braves about the culture during Indian Hill Global Cultural Celebration, and throughout the year in the classroom when we needed you. The fair that alternate between the primary, elementary, and middle school, it may look very similar in the pictures, but it takes a lot of effort to update that information every year, and the, that information is updated based on what teachers are teaching in the classroom. So the amount of time you guys put in every year to update those charts and to update your tables based on the age group, it's immense, and we really appreciate that. Thank you to all our current parents and our alumni parents, whose kids have already graduated, but they are still here, helping organize the global fair, and high school food tasting, which is something new that started three years back, and which kids have absolutely loved it. So high school, sorry, high school food tasting for all our high school Braves, by cooking their authentic recipes, so our Braves can experience how food differ from country to It is not easy to cook 800 dumplings, or 700 cups of mangolasi, or 100 enchiladas, or cook fresh kebabs onsite, but you all do it with such an ease on your face, which is just amazing to see. So, once again, I just want to say thank you to all our parents, our teachers, our administrators, and our community members, who help our students to be more globally ready, by providing such unique experiences. We all truly appreciate your time, energy, and effort, and in my opinion, this is Indian Hill Promise. So thank you again, guys, for coming, talking to us, and sharing your experiences with all our students. It really means a lot. Thank you.
I'd just like to also add and reinforce, we'd like to thank Monica Gibson, one of our educators, who spends a lot of time with not only the Global Parent Network, but we ser, thank you. We serve families from over 40 countries, and Monica is a chief point of contact for those families, to help them to understand what it means to be a brave, to navigate the school system, to understand supports in the community, and is constantly working to provide resources to those families. So we really appreciate Monica, and we really appreciate all of our global parents, and thank you so much for putting on not just a great week, but all the things you do monthly for the school district. Next up, we're going to switch gears for a minute for a short operations update from Mr. Nichols.
It will be brief, Mr. Konecki, thank you. If you've been outside, you may have noticed that you're starting to see some action on the site again for the middle school, and they've been removing the concrete pad, they've been doing a great job, we're trying to be great neighbors and not making a mess of the village when we come in and out, so they've been very careful to take care of that. We don't appreciate the snow and ice, though, it's not helping, but they're still moving forward, so you should see that out of there in the next couple of weeks. And there'll be backfilling, we have some basements, things like that, so the backfilling with dirt, and then we'll start to move towards grading the site and getting ready for the spring, where you'll start to see the building come up out of the ground. So we're excited about that. We, just as some thank yous, we did have quite a winter storm here, and in fact, even a week ago before that, we had a storm that I think the meteorologist said it overperformed, and so it overperformed at about 3:30 in the afternoon when we were taking kids home. But let me start with our maintenance team. If you don't know, Ken Stegman, Anthony Tyler, Dave Tudor, and Mike Slade are maintenance guys. Those guys put in 12-hour shifts over the weekend to get our grounds ready to go for some events that happened over the weekend, as well as Monday, and if any of you tried to shovel your own driveways and you didn't do a little work along the way, you know it would have been pretty difficult. So they did a great job, and our custodial team also followed up, making sure sidewalks were cleared, and we've salted those. So we really appreciate all the efforts that went on over the weekend to do that. And then, again, last Friday, when that storm overperformed, our transportation department just did a great job. They had all our kids home really on time, and it was tough out there. We know that as they were driving around, and I was monitoring the bus radio at the end, just waiting to make sure everybody got in, and one of our bus drivers asked transportation to call a family because they had an instrument on their bus, and the child wasn't on there, and they said they'd drop it off in five minutes because they wanted him to have that instrument for the weekend. And just, to me, that's a great example of the dedication of our transportation department, and the great job they do taking care of our kids every day to and from school. So just wanted to say thank you to them, and our whole real, really, maintenance facilities group out there, so they did a great job. And that's all we got. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, and I would just add, you know, our Director of Transportation, Diane Spurlock, is one of the probably three or four people who are up at 4:00 a.m. on those mornings, driving our routes, to ensure that our roads are safe for our bus drivers, and does an amazing job of giving us great feedback and helping to make some important decisions with the weather, and take care of her staff and our buses over time. Diane does a great job, and of course, every winter in January, I'm sure she loves her job even more, but she does a great job, so we really, truly appreciate that. Okay, we're going to talk just briefly tonight about the IH Promise Strategic Plan. Eric, if you could help me, please, just to transition to this slide. We will be rolling out the actual documents of our strategic plan, beginning this month, next week, with faculty and staff, and then publicly, you will start to see the state of the schools message coming in the mail to parents. I don't know if Mr. Salini is there. One of the initiatives that we are working on as a district, of course, has to do with our targeted and streamlined communications, and then also making sure that we are listening and engaging with the public in new and different ways. Last month, we talked about some new committee meetings, so I just wanted to share this information briefly this evening. We will be launching our new committee meetings next month. This will be posted on the website, there will be some email invites, and for anybody who's interested in either the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, or the District's STEM Advisory Committee, or the Safety Health and Wellness Committee, those will be launching here in early March. The Diversity Equity Inclusion is the first meeting on March 2nd, and then we have a couple lined up for later in the month. So wanted to make sure everybody was aware, and we are excited to launch those new engagement phases with the community next month. Switch gears now again, and that's all for the recognition part.
Thank you, everybody, and if I could, before we move on to the public commentary, just add my thanks to the Global Parents Network. My second grader enjoyed all the activity, and it's, we talk about the new strategic plan we're rolling out, we're rolling out with child as the whole person. This is really what we talk about, and it's just tremendous. So thank you for everything that was done, and congratulations to the mock trial, as a former mock trial person, I don't think there's anybody here, it's always near and dear to my heart, seeing them win every time they get on the stage. So with that, we'll move to public commentary. Mr. Davis?
We have nobody signed up for this evening?
Really? Okay. That's that. Superintendent's report, Mr. Konecki.
Thank you. Board members, first up under number seven tonight, we have letter A, approval of our resolution, which authorizes our annual membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association. We renew that membership commitment every year at this time. Item B is the approval of several overnight field trips. There are actually two, I believe, on the addendum, one on the addendum, sorry, and one on the regular agenda. Those are for future field trips. Letter C is our general personnel actions and tuition reimbursements. We have some approval of certified staff contracts, the approval of some non-certified staff contracts. Item three, I will come back to, is the approval of supplemental personal service contract for the football coach. Number four is a list of our supplemental and personal service contracts for spring. Number five is a change of contract. Under number six, we do have a couple of resignations and retirements to post, and then number seven is some tuition reimbursements. I'd just like to go back to number three for a moment. Some of you may know that we named our new football coach ahead of the meeting because of the timing, and we were able to introduce Coach Rodenberg, our new head football coach and football program member, last Saturday, and we had a large event here Saturday morning that was really well-attended by families in the community, and I think Coach Rodenberg is very excited to get going. Coach Rodenberg will also be teaching physical education at the high school in the future. He's coming to us with multiple state championships from multiple states over a storied career, and is a veteran, experienced coach and teacher. We're very lucky to have him, and I just thought I'd like to reinforce that. For those of you who haven't had a chance to meet Coach Rodenberg yet, he will be joining us soon. So if there are no questions, board members, I'd like you to please consider the approval of number seven, items A through C7, including the addendum items B2 and 3.
Is that a move?
Second.
Mr. Summarall?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Eichholz?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Tullis?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Konecki. Mr. Davis, you're up.
For my report this evening, I have items A is to approve the amendments of the January 7 and January 11 meetings of the Board of Education, to approve the financial reports for the month ending January 2022, the approval of the establishment of a student activity account, The Power of Music. Item D is to approve construction contracts, we have several. There are two on the regular agenda, for Susie Q Logistics Hot Water Pumps Pre-Purchase, $13,865, and for Skanska USA Building Incorporated, a construction guaranteed maximum price, GMP3, for the middle school early site package, $4,537,301.86. On item D, on the addendum, Validated Custom Solutions Ohio, Semi-Custom Air Handling Units Pre-Purchase, $1,732,485 even. Susie Q Logistics Semi-Custom Air Handling Units Pre-Purchase Procurement, $86,624. Susie Q Logistics Hot Water Boiler Pre-Purchase, $42,569 even. And finally, Susie Q Logistics for a Generator Pre-Purchase of $217,507. The reason why we decided to do so many pre-purchases is because of the situation with equipment moving now within every facet of our society. We wanted to make sure that we got the equipment that was needed for our project in a timely fashion, so we're ordering it now. We're also guarding against any inflation that these might have in the future as well. We've got, we've got storage for these when they do come in. If they do come in early, we make sure everything is handled correctly, and that all of that equipment is safe and not able to be stolen. So it makes sense that we do this now and get it taken care of, and that way we're secure for the future.
So all these, all these pieces that we just went over, these are all for the new construction? None of them are for anything existing, is that correct?
That is correct. Yep.
And then, as far as your timeline, in terms of getting them all in queue for the projects, is there any possibility that this could delay us in any way on any of these things? Are they critical enough that they could hold us up?
Actually, I have a person in the audience that can help me with that. Mr. Becker, would you be able to answer that question for me?
Sure. A lot of reasons for pre-purchase is to, you know, typically what we do is we let, we bring on the chemical companies for the work, we need the work, they'll have a push timeline. We can wait that long, knowing where the next package after the sites could be, the steel and foundations, not ground, that's why. You know, we want to make sure that equipment's here, so when we're building, we can set it in place, not have any delays or whatever it is. Just with the certain.
And my final question is, is there anything else that we're missing that we should be thinking about along the same lines as this stuff? Or you guys feel pretty good about getting out in front of these one-offs, I would call them?
The next big one, steel, like we said, coming up here, we're working on the shell, like the foundation and steel package. Obviously, the reasons we picked a lot of the structure, we're trying to eliminate the waste of deck, we do have that stuff, we're working through that with our steel packages that we'll be fitting here like next Tuesday. And then, that's, that's the only big concern, obviously roofing. When we get into that, we've got to start figuring out where that's at. We think our timeline right now is okay with the stuff, we're going to see.
And I will say, Moats Engineering is working with MSA on the design of all of these things, and Moats Engineering has been a partner of the district for over a decade, I believe, is the timeline they've been here. They're the ones who vetted all of these items that we needed to preorder, put together those packages, and put those out to bid. So I think they've done a very good job of being inclusive of all those items that we're going to need in a timely fashion, and to get here so the project stays on time.
Think the other thing, Mr. Summarall, with the question too, just for review, for anybody who's paying attention, is that typically, as you see these things on a board agenda for action moving forward with this type of multi-site project, we're going to be sharing things that have been vetted by our project team and our advisory, and recommending some of that timing to cover exactly what we're trying to do now, which is make sure the equipment is here when it's time to place it, or when it's time to use it, and that we don't have delays, and that affect the timeline in an adverse way.
Great, thank you very much.
So I have one question, is, so these things would be needed after you have ordered your steel and the things, which you have not even placed an order? So this, you would need it later, right?
I'm sorry, what?
So all these equipments that we are ordering, you will need it later? Before this, you would need the steel and for the foundation and all those other supplies?
Yeah, and typically, by the time you go through a process of reviewing, like, the shop drawings, the manufacturer comes back with, like, a shop drawings, the middle, what the design equipment intent is going to be, going through that process takes a long time, maybe two months, and then you release it for fabrication. Right now, air handlers could probably, could be sitting anywhere like six months out. So a lot of this equipment, just recently, we're doing a job that we couldn't get a generator. Generators could be, what, a year out?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so what we're trying to do is get this stuff up front, so as, you know, that six months it takes, put the foundations in, start coming up out of the ground with the structure, then we get that piece of equipment, we can set it in before the recovery.
And another part to that, Mrs. Singh, is that as they, as these drawings develop, and our design develops over time, those orders they're going to do for steel are going to be very specific, whereas we, they're able to design those air handlers and that large equipment to fit the areas that we're going to need them in, so that's why they're able to preorder those now, as opposed to being able to go way out early on steel. We don't know exactly how much we need at this point. Is that fair to say, Pete?
So the size would not matter, right? Like, supposedly, so the project becomes a little bigger, so this would be the right size that you would need for that big of a project?
It's incorporated for dealing with the additional using space that we can handle.
Perfect, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Are there any more questions?
If not, I'll make a motion to...
Actually, I got one more item.
Oh, you got one more?
Yep.
I got a question.
I appreciate the enthusiasm, every, most of the time, the treasurer's report isn't that well received, so...
E, sorry.
If I could ask one question while we're on this, just at a high level, are these numbers, this is obviously the first big site work contract we've approved, at least with this board, is that still in line with kind of what we expected from a year ago?
So I know we're above where we thought we were going to be. I can let Mr. Becker dive in a little further with the numbers. We are seeing some market condition growth with that underground. There were also some existing conditions that we didn't know were there when we, we put sort of that estimate together. Pete, if you want to...
The underground storm detention...
Hey Pete, would you like to go to the mic? Would that, would that help you?
Just again, we want to introduce Pete Becker from Skanska Construction.
This is weird for me, so sorry. The underground detention at schematic design has developed quite a bit on the site work package. Normally, what we like to do is go out and dig like a detention pond out away from the front of the building. The middle school and the high school site's pretty limited. We don't have room to put that detention area, so now we're forced to put it in pipe underground. We didn't anticipate that happening at schematic, so we're sort of dealing with that now in design development, so that's one of the, I think it's like, oh, about a million dollars worth of the site work number, that 4 million number, that sort of grew in the scope. Other than that, just there's a lot of pipe relocation, it's a complicated site squeezing in between two buildings, and those kind of things just keep, keep throwing in wrenches when you got to start relocating a bunch of utilities that normally you don't see. The cost of pipe has gone up pretty good since from, from last year.
Are there any further questions from Mr. Becker?
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Thanks.
My final item of the evening is item E, to approve the following contract for the 2021-2022 school year. This is for Claremont County ESC Services at CEC South, excuse me, an annualized cost of $37,327. Will be billed at a daily rate of $217.01 for each day the students enrolled. This is for one student, as per their IEP. Are there any questions for my report? If not, I would ask that we approve items A through E.
So I would make a motion to approve items 8A, B, C, D, and then I think it, it's seven over here on the addendum, so, but I think it's supposed to be eight, seven, D, and E.
Oh, I'm sorry, it should be item VI8.
Yep.
BIII.
I'll make a motion to approve. A through D, and then D and E.
Second.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichholz?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Summarall?
Aye.
Mr. Tullis?
Yes.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll move on to other business COVID operations update.
Thank you. Board members, we're just going to run through again a couple of slides, this is a little more efficient than what you see in the past. We're kind of evolving this as some of the language and the orders from the state of Ohio have evolved. Just in general, again, we want to remind everybody, our priority is in-school learning. I think it's safe to say that the Omicron case surge is trending downward now. There are still concerns, obviously, in the county, in the region, in the state, about hospitalizations and those numbers, and case numbers overall.
I think it's safe to say that the Omicron case surge is trending downward now, there are still concerns, obviously, in the county, in the region, in the state, about hospitalizations and, and those numbers, and case numbers overall, still considered contiguous spread. However, we're starting to see some relief in the area, and especially in schools. We're gonna continue to monitor everything that's going on locally, regionally, at the state and national level. We're gonna continue to take weekly input from health officials and government officials to make informed decisions. We're gonna continue, obviously, prioritizing in-person learning, and keeping our typical annual schedule of calendar activities up and running, that includes field trips. There will be many back this spring that were not able to happen in the past, and we are very excited about that, and I know our students are. A couple of things, we had issued a short-term mask mandate on January 11th that tracked for three weeks and expired on January 28th. There are people who have been watching very closely our data dashboard, and I just wanted to remind the people about where we're getting our resource information from weekly, and, and as we're comparing what's going on on our campus to what's going on locally. We're always looking to see what's going on with our partners at TriHealth, we're always looking to see what's going on with the Hamilton County Health, Public Health Agency, and we report cases to them, so Hamilton County Health's COVID tracker is a, is a great tool, and anybody can use that every week to monitor not only cases, but vaccinations, local to zip codes, and age demographics in the area. We're continuing to watch federal transportation orders, we should get some news on that very soon, about the March federal transportation order, which is, again, a mask mandate on all buses and transportation, that's still in effect in our district. And then, of course, we're looking daily at some other detail as we move along. We have not surveyed again since January, just so that everybody knows, but this is where our faculty vaccine rates stood in January, and then our grade breakdowns, one through seven and eight through twelve. We're continuing to make progress. If you check on the Ohio COVID Tracker page, and you check the Hamilton County Health page, you will start to see a large number of young children, age five through eighteen, continue to get their boosters and become fully vaccinated. So, we're very happy about that overall, and many of you may have seen the news recently that there are approvals coming for five and under, and those things will be handled locally through pediatricians' offices with individual families by choice. Some caseload data, and again, I think this tracks along with what you saw with our short-term mask mandate. You can see the totals there at the bottom, and if you move horizontally, you'll see the Omicron surge that impacted our cases here on campus, and though we had masks on, we still had a lot to deal with, especially with student cases, and then, of course, as everybody knows, our staffing numbers became very strained during this time. But I have to say, to the credit of our staff members, our families, our substitutes, our sub-aides, our substitute bus drivers, we were able to stay in school five days a week, and I think that is a celebration for this school district and for everybody involved. It, it's not a fun thing to go through, we truly appreciate the cooperation of our families, and to be able to try to mitigate that surge as much as we could, so I'm so grateful to our families and our staff, and we got through it, and, and things are getting better. Finally, just some general data about federal COVID, COVID vaccination rates, where they're going, they continue to trend up. The federal benchmark, again, set last spring, was seventy percent. When you start to look at the people in our country, eighteen and over, fully vaccinated or who have one dose, we're, we're getting there, and that trend has really, really grown since November again. So, for whatever reasons, we're starting to see a large growth, and then booster doses, eighteen and over, are starting to grow again since December. Our vaccination rate locally, sixty-four point two percent for those twelve and over in Ohio, and sixty percent in, in over now in Hamilton County, and those links there are, again, that, those are the sites and the resources that I'm using weekly to track all of our, our cases. Finally, just want to remind everybody, for families who are in need, we have resources that are available. If you talk to a school counselor, a school psychologist, an assistant principal or principal or a nurse, we can direct you to other resources. We know that we've had people who have asked some questions about social, emotional, or mental health resources, and we have plenty of partners that we work with in the community, and want to continue to help families to connect with them if need be. Questions or comments, board members?
Yeah, I'd like to make a, make a comment, I guess, really thanking three groups of people. First, you know, if you think about around just the greater Cincinnati community, we had a lot of schools that did have to move to a virtual format over the surge of Omicron, and so, one I'd like to thank, our administrators and central office. I know, I called one time to talk to Mr. Nichols, and he was over at the primary school, filling in and doing things, I know that he wasn't the only person, so just very appreciative of that. Secondly, to our staff, that fought through and did what they could to make sure they were there to keep our schools open. I think everyone in the community can agree that that is an essential part, having the opportunity for our kids to be in school in person. And the third group would just be the parents in the community. I know that it's been a challenging time, there's a lot of emotions, for whatever reason, that are connected to the current pandemic, and I think that this group and the administration tried to do the best they could to hear folks, listen to them, make very informed decisions to be able to keep our kids safe, and so, thank you to the community and the family that showed some grace as they were expressing their opinions and thoughts, and that it's important that, that our community does know that those opinions and thoughts were heard, and we always try to make the best, you know, and most informed decisions we can make. So, thank you to, to those three groups.
Yeah, I would like to echo that, it's nothing short of a Herculean effort by Kirk and his team, the building principals, to the teachers, to everybody, that we got through the last month. It's not easy right now, being in public education. There's a lot of emotions, a lot of people charged up over various issues, and our team did a great job keeping the schools open, which has been primary goal number one since the beginning of all of this, and I, I know how hard the team works, I know how hard everybody works to keep this place operating at the level it does, and we just appreciate it as, as much as we possibly can. So, thank you for everything.
Thank you all for that. I think it's a really interesting thing we talk about amongst the team, that in the past two years, as we transitioned hopefully from global pandemic into, over the next, you know, six to nine months, some endemic activity, that we've been in school in person five days a week ninety-seven percent of the time in the last two years, and that is just amazing compared to what we've seen nationally, and that's because we have such a great staff and such great families that work with us, so we're very proud of that, and proud of all of them.
And our students.
Yes, families count, students, for sure. These students have done so much in the last two years, it's amazing what they have been through and how resilient they are. So, that's all for the COVID report this evening. If you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer, otherwise, I would say that's it for the agenda tonight. Any questions from the team up here? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Does it move?
Voice vote? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for coming this evening.